So, welcome. It's great to have you with us. My name is Stephen Feder. I manage the United Learning Program for the General Counsel Office, and it is always a delight and a pleasure to be able to connect with folks from coast to coast to coast. So, thanks. Thanks for joining us and for being a part of this. It's great to have you here. Looking forward to our Lenten journey together over the next six weeks. I have really enjoyed plowing through this book, and I hope as we get into it that you will too. Just before we get into the material, I wanted to make sure that you were finding your way around the page at Church X that we're restoring all of our materials. So, we will only do this once, but let me just take a minute here to talk through our our course page so you can find it. So, if I go to churchx.ca, actually, let me log out, so I'll start right from the beginning. Most of you, I think, have found it, but you can log in here using the button in the top right corner with your username and your password, and you can either use your username or you can put your email address in here. It'll recognize both and then login. It should take you to your dashboard. Scroll down past the box that says newest from Church X, and you'll see a list of all the courses that you belong to. I belong to all of them, so it's a very long list. Yours won't be nearly so long. But find the graphic or the title for our course together and click on that to go to the course page. Then, over here on the course page, you've got a little bit of information about the course itself, the start times in each of Canada's time zones. This is a table of contents down the side here. You can make it go away if it gets in the way, or you can bring it back by pulling that little icon with a bunch of lines and dots. And each of these sections will open up or collapse. If you come down to the February 21, you can see that I've posted the reading for today, and then the discussion starter videos that we're going to use during our session. And you're welcome to download these and use them in your own settings if you want to. Some of you, I know, are running local Lenten studies in your own congregation, and you might find some of these discussion starters helpful. So, they're here and available for you. The links are only good for six months. They're linked to my personal OneDrive. So, those links will expire in six months, but that should give you lots of time if you need it. And then, any other resources that come up, I'm going to put underneath each page. So, here's a report from the United Church deepening climate integrity that we'll talk about towards the end of our session here today. So, that's what I've put on here so far, and after the meeting is over, I will post the recording down here too, under the same heading. Any questions about that? Feel free to open your mic and just ask a question, sort of shout it out right now while we're still in the gathering mode. Yeah, Janice, you need to open your mic. Yep.
Yes, thank you. How much are we, like you said, that we could share the videos? Will that be a continuing thing if we're leading a Bible study or?
Sure. Yep.
Okay.
That's part of what we're hoping is that this will become a resource for you. So, if this is useful, if these recordings are useful to you in your own setting, by all means, use them.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. Good question.
Just a question from Barry and Valerie. I have no idea how I actually managed to get this open today. When I clicked on things, it said that my Zoom was out of date and to download stuff, but that didn't work. And then, I needed a password for the course, which, of course, I didn't have. So, as I said, I have no idea how I managed to get in here, but hopefully, next week it'll be better.
I sure hope it will. Are you the person that sent me the email a couple of minutes ago? Nope. Somebody else asked me for a passcode. So, here you are. You should be able to find everything you need on your own time. So, go into Church X, login, see if you can find that course page. Here's the Zoom link for our meeting. It's this sort of blue link. I tried to make it as prominent as I could. But feel free to play around. You can't break anything. See if you can make it work, and if you can't make it work, give me a call or drop me an email, and we can set up a one-on-one and walk through it together. It's important to me that you find your way around, but I don't want to take up 45 people's times just to solve one person's problem right now. But this will all work on its own without me here, and it'll work for the two of us whenever. When you registered for this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. My husband's asking, there's supposed to be a PDF version of the reflection?
Yes. So, if you scroll down to February 20, here we go, the foreword by Lydia Smith. Under the heading Reading Each Week, I've put a copy of the reading. So, you should be able to open it there from right there.
Wonderful.
And similarly, I think we've got copies of all of them in here now. I'm still working on the some of the author videos. I was editing Fields of Wheat by Jackson this morning. So, the recordings that I've done are posted, and the recordings that I haven't finished editing, I'll get up as soon as I can. But all of the readings are there now. Helpful question. Ellen is asking whether you get a copy of the whole book? No, we give you a discount for the book, and we give you the six readings we're actually going to use, but we can't give you the book itself. Golly, Beryl, if you haven't got the book yet, I would rattle the chain with bookstore. Because, yeah, it should be there by now. The other thing to do, you might want to get it in EPUB version. If you, there's, you know, if you can read it on your tablet or on your phone or something, you can get it right away. It's also significantly cheaper because the book is cheaper, and you don't have to pay for shipping. So, I have too many books in this house. I started buying all my books on EPUB just because I can store them more easily. Any last-minute questions before we move out of that?
This is hope. I bought the ebook and I downloaded it, but then I wasn't able to open it. It says the word couldn't understand it. So, it's still there in limbo. I paid for it, but I haven't got it yet.
Sure. So, if you stay on the line after we're done today, I happily talk with you about it. EPUB is an odd format that's used to distribute copyright books. And so, you have to use a special program to open it.
Okay, good. Thanks.
No problem. Okay. So, those are kind of important starter pieces, I think. And again, I'm willing to stay on afterwards to answer any more of those kinds of questions, but I think we should jump into our content now. The other thing I wanted to do very quickly is just in the chat, take a moment to think about some group norms. We're going to move in and out of some discussion. We're probably telling some personal stories. What do you think would be good group norms for ourselves as we kind of work together on these things? Add your thoughts into the chat there. Listen, says Joanne. Use the hand-up icon. That's probably going to work when we're having a chance to speak. We may want to, we may not even want to open the mics and speak, especially when we're in plenary. We probably most of the time use the chat. Allow each person a chance to speak, certainly when we're in small groups. Confidentiality, says Wendy. What does that mean? From Diane, say a little more about confidentiality.
Oh, sure, Stephen. Yeah, just if people mention something that is kind of personal. You know, I mean, people probably won't talk too much about their personal lives. Maybe they will, but you know, somebody mentions something or an opinion or something that, and I would just caution people not to share that, even to your, you know, family member or a friend when you're having, you know, a discussion because confidence, people should feel quite free that this is, things are not going to be shared outside what people say.
I think that's really important, and I like to say, take away the learnings and leave the individuals behind. We don't need to mention names and personal stories, but taking away the learning is why we're here. So, I think that's helpful. Tell our own stories. Don't share the stories of others, says Robin. Goof boldly, says Lisa. We're forgiving people. We will all make goofs, for sure. I think those are helpful group norms. Thanks for taking the time to do that. So, as we gather, I have this candle that lives behind me that I use whenever I I gather, I use it with my congregation and worship and in variety of different things. You can see, I think I have to replace it. It's kind of beaten up at this point. But wanted to just take a moment to pause and remember that we are gathered as children of God. We are here not just as concerned citizens, but we are here as faithful Christians. That this is the time to think together about the environment, but also to give thanks for the creation that we live in. And so, as we gather, and as we gather particularly today, we're going to begin with a scripture about the creation story. Think about light, the light that God created first, according to Genesis 1. The light that draws us together, the light that warms us and inspires us, the light that connects us and drives us, the light that shows us the truth. So, let's invite that light to be here amongst us. And if you have a candle at home, I invite you to light yours there as we light ours here. Let that be the reminder of our common quest for understanding, for inspiration, and for hope. Amen. Let's take a moment in the chat as well to remember the land we're sitting on and all those who have been stewards of the land, even before many of our ancestors came here. A moment to add to the chat now. The treaty that you are bound by or the people who cared for the land before you were here. Remember how that land and those stewards ground us and connect us for thousands of years to this piece of creation. Like Deborah, I'm remembering the Huron Wendat and the Sisagas of Credit. We're going to begin with Genesis 1. I wonder. I did ask for a couple of, hang on, just put this away. I did ask for a couple of volunteers to read the scripture, and then I went away for the Family Day weekend and didn't follow up. So, are there a couple of people who could read the lesson for us as I put it on the screen? Just let me know in the chat, if you please. Thank you, Robin. I need one more. And Wendy, so Robin, if you could read the black text, and Wendy, if you could read the green text, then let's listen.
I'm reading the green, correct? As God said, "Let the earth bring forth living creatures of every kind, cattle and creeping things and wild animals of the earth of every kind, and it was so."
God made the, oh, sorry. Sorry, I misunderstood. Go ahead.
No, maybe I did too. Am I green? I'm green though, right?
All right. Just whoever read the first one, let the other one.
God made the wild animals of the earth of every kind and the cattle of every kind and everything that creeps upon the ground of every kind, and God saw that it was good.
Then God said, "Let us make humankind in our image according to our likeness, and let them have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the birds of the air and over the cattle and over all the wild animals of the earth and over every creeping thing that creeps upon the earth."
So, God created humankind in God's image. In the image of God, God created them. Male and female, God created them.
God blessed them, and God said to them, "Be fruitful and multiply and fill the earth and subdue it and have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the birds of the air and over every living thing that moves upon the earth."
God said, "See, I have given you every plant yielding seed that is upon the face of all the earth and every tree with seed in its fruit. You shall have them for food and to every beast of the earth and to every bird of the air and to everything that creeps on the earth, everything has the breath of life. I have given every green plant for food, and it was so."
God saw everything that God had made, and indeed, it was very good.
And there was evening and there was morning, the sixth day.
Thank you. So, take a moment on the chat and just in a sentence, how do you connect this creation story to your own sense, your own personal passion for the climate? Goodness, says Blaine. God said it was, said Janice. Beryl says, "If the trees die and the water is polluted, we all will eventually die." Maybe God should have given it to someone more responsible, says Linda. God said it was good. So, it's our call to care for that goodness. Care not to pollute. With sadness, it was created very good, and we have made it not so good. Carrie says, "I have a problem with the word dominion." I'm not going to read every comment, by the way. Some of them are going to come in too fast. You're welcome to read however much as you want, and you're also welcome just to listen to what I read aloud. The folks who watch this in the recording later won't have a chance to read the chat. I'll try to hold up the things that I notice that are different from each other. If I miss something important, put it in again. Discussion about dominion, and we'll get there because Lydia, in her reading, addresses that too. So, let's focus on goodness first because that's really where the book starts. It starts with the goodness of creation. What is it that makes creation good for you? Abundance. Diversity, variety. Beauty, relationships, awe, sustainability, healing nature. Hmm, I look for creation now in the broken places, says Heather. A dandelion in the crack of a sidewalk, mushrooms springing out of a tree stump. Meg says, "In Act Fast," it says, "God saw everything that they had made, and indeed, it was very good." I think that's what we put here too, wasn't it? I said God had made. I think the "they" there is a singular pronoun. I think we're trying to avoid male pronouns for God. So, the book starts with a sense of the goodness of creation and and suggests, I think, for us that as Christians, this story is foundational. And that however we respond to the climate crisis that we're in, it begins with a sense of the goodness of what we're trying to preserve and care for. And so, from that perspective, then I invite you to listen while Lydia Smith reads the foreword that she wrote for the book. Lydia was the editor. She and several of our colleagues and I sat down together about a year ago to brainstorm what the topic should be for this year's Lenten book. And she was the one who contacted the authors and helped to shape the book. And I thought the foreword that she wrote gives us a wonderful way in to the book. So, let's listen as she reads it and try to catch a sense of her vision of what she was hoping for as she pulled this together and invited the authors to write their pieces.
The sincerity in this book compels me to confess. I have been slow and naive in my response to the climate crisis. I have always acted for the climate, carbon and consumption fast, recycling, diet and lifestyle changes, but I have not done so with urgency or with passion. Rather, I felt obliged to clean up after myself, to be socially and morally responsible. The truth is, I believe that there were many more imminent threats, race riots, nuclear war, oppression to our existence. My hope was that after we humans went the way of the dinosaurs, earth would flourish again, and the trees of the fields would clap their lush green hands with joy and good riddance. Unfortunately, we now know that our mess is impacting all of creation, and earth may never return to its lushness in the same way. I confess that I was wrong to compartmentalize the threats to God's creation. These dangers, like all of us, are interconnected. To fight against racism is to fight against environmental racism. To defend water is to defend all life. To love a tree is to love the air that we breathe. To advocate for human rights is to advocate for abundant life for all. Because we are connected, if the climate is in crisis, we are in crisis. Whether or not we understand or believe it, as part of creation, we move together. I confess that I have much to learn about the power, majesty, and awe of this blue dot we call home and much to understand about how my actions affect the earth community. Lastly, I reluctantly confess that I have fledgling hope in our ability to create the world of God's dreams. I believe Matthew's words, that for God, all things are possible. But possibility is very different from plausibility. I worry that my actions are futile. Am I boastfully fixing leaks on a ship that's fated for disaster? The good news is that as followers of Jesus, we have experience with nurturing hope from infancy to places of flourishing. We know through the Christ child how one can be powerful while powerless. We also understand through our Christian story that no act of love, a gift of gold, a cosmic alignment, a gentle movement of praise is ever wasted. This Lent, no matter where you are on your spiritual journey or where you place yourself within the climate crisis, you are invited to share your love for God's good creation through actions and fasts. Don't worry if you're a newbie to creation care like me. We are surrounded by faithful disciples who have attentively cared for God's creation and nurtured our shared hope. We have much to learn from each other. And take heart. If you are skeptical about the efficiency of our personal actions and fasts for the climate, our faith teaches us that acts of love, no matter the size, strengthen the love that we share with one another. While our hope and love cannot be measured, we know that it will be tested. I am reminded of the love that I shared in my life in both small and large acts and the love that I share with baby Jesus, the cosmic Christ, and all manifestations of the divine that have been strengthened through intentional actions. No matter where you are in your spiritual journey and no matter what your relationship with Christianity is, I pray that this book will expand your love for God, deepen your connection to creation, and strengthen your hope for God's dream realized. May we act and fast together for a better world. Lydia.
Well, just sit with that for a minute. And as you reflect on what she was saying, choose a word or a phrase that spoke to you in that. Put it in the chat. Not just the word, but why? What did it make you think of? What caught you? Urgency, says Angela. I could relate to the statement of caring for creation, but without urgency or passion. Interesting. Diane says, "Something about starting small." Yeah, that was hopeful for me too, because I'm not sure I have the wherewithal to start big. Hmm, possibility is different from plausibility. That's discouraging, isn't it? Fledgling hope. Vulnerability we feel when taking on big things. Lydia starts with confession. Well, that hit me between the eyes. Do you start from confession or do you start somewhere else? Wendy talks about expecting to leave feeling guilty about my lack of effort. But I truly appreciate she takes away that sense of guilt right at the start. But I truly appreciate she takes away that sense of guilt right at the start. Heather says, as Lydia was reading, I heard act and fast in a completely different way. Do we need to be still and listen first until we learn the way we should fast in our own small way? Sharing a little bit of oneself, says Diane, is a way to connect with the audience and listeners. It can be comforting.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Steve. I don't, I don't know how to participate in the chat. I don't know what to do.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I should have mentioned it. I thought everybody knew Zoom now from, from, from birth, right? Move your mouse over top of the, of the window where you can see my picture and look for an icon that says chat. And if you don't see it, it might be hiding behind the three little dots in the word more. Click the word chat and you type at the bottom of the chat box where it says type message here. When you push enter, then your comment is posted so that everybody can read, everybody can read it.
Hmm, I, I don't, I don't see it. I'll, I'll wait till after to connect with you.
As long as you can keep your comments brief, I would say feel free to open your mic and just send them. But, but the reason we use the chat is so that lots of people can participate.
Thank you.
So, thanks. So I began my conversation with Lydia by asking her about this confession and why she thought it was important to do that. And here's what she said.
You know, none of this could ever have come from me. Like I, I haven't done that work and I haven't been grounded in that same way in creation care because truth be told, Steve, I really thought the world would end in nineteen ninety-nine.
Uh huh.
It was really, it was really of the camp like, we're all going the way of the dodo bird. Well, dodo birds still exist, but you know, we're all really going the way of the dinosaurs, like. So the hope that everyone had in this book just really inspired me.
It wasn't a big topic in my seminary education either. I mean, we talked about salvation, but that was human stuff. It was about Jesus, the healer and Jesus who exercised demons and Jesus who, who challenged social structures. I mean, I think you have to reach into the, to the Hebrew scriptures to get luminous things about care for creation.
Yeah, and things that don't just have us as gardening assistants, like, you know, kind of this idea of us being the stewards and the keepers and the owners, like instead of the understanding of, actually, we're all in this together. And if we're reconciling with Christ and reconciling with, with God, we need to reconcile with all of creation. And that definitely didn't come up for me either, in my formation, in my formational years, yeah.
I think we have really struggled with humanity's role in relation to the rest of creation, particularly in Western Christianity. On sort of, um, middle ages understandings of dominion as domination to twentieth century understandings of dominion as stewardship, you know, Douglas John Hall and stuff, to whatever seems to be evolving now. I think the whole church is reevaluating how our faith connects to creation.
Yeah, and I do think there's, um, our lived experiences as well, like how for, for my family and I'm a, I'm a urban kid. I've lived, I've been born and raised in Scarborough. But my family are from Jamaica and like, you know, the idea of just kind of going into the bush and foraging and being connected to the land, like no one would ever talk about being connected to the land because how could you not be? Like, that's where you got your food. That's where you got all your things. So all of these, um, separations that we talk about in, in my experience of Western culture in here don't even exist in other places. Like there's this real kind of Western notion of us and them with creation, with other things that in other parts of the world you don't think about in the same way. But I realize we are now being forced to, many people in many parts of the world are being forced to think about it in other ways because of Western exploitation, right? And because of now the impact of our actions is disproportionate to people to other people in other parts of the world. One of the reasons.
We'll stop there for a minute. We'll come back to, to Lydia, but she always says such condensed things to say. I think there's lots to unpack just in, in that much of it. Susan, we're glad you've been with us and I hope you'll pick up the rest of this in the recording. What did, what did you notice in that? Marine says, for me, confession is made in community, in the body of Christ. I don't often use personal confession. Beryl, we, we did mention the dominion word there a little briefly. Anything jump out at you in, in our conversation between us? The shift away from people as dominion holders to people as part of the creative world, says Lisa. Dominion is a fateful word in the history of care of creation, right? It puts us in charge in important ways. Sets us up to exploit, I think. Dominion to me also brings to mind colonization, says Beryl. Well, the idea that we have a God given right to dominate, right? Do dodo birds still exist? No, and Andy, I don't think they do. I, I wasn't going to argue with Lydia on that one, but I, I think the dodo birds are Angela says, I heard that we were to be stewards of creation from the pulpit in the nineteen seventies when I was a child. It really stuck with me. Deborah says, I hadn't thought about it being a particularly Western thing to be disconnected from the land, water and creation, but this is insightful for sure. I've thought of it as city and country dichotomy. What I loved about my conversation with Lydia was the way that she connected care for creation with all of the other injustices that we as Christians grapple with. Sometimes we can put every issue in its own silo, right? And, and the way that she connected them all together, I just found really striking. I feel the shift from the earth is here to serve us to, we are here to care for the earth, says Janice. Coming from another denomination in the nineties, says Ursula. One thing that impressed me about the United Church was the new creed and its less anthropocentric focus, especially in lines such as to live with respect in creation. Wendy says, Lydia recognizes that in Genesis, God made all things to work together and rely on each other. We've forgotten that. Let me carry on with Lydia and we'll listen a little further as she talks, talks more about those things that, that jumped out at Deborah.
Since I must admit too, that I never really talked that much about environmentalism and, and creation care when I was younger was because it really seemed to be a white thing. Really, it really did because it always seemed to cost more. It always seemed to like be more elite and it always seemed to be like this is what this group of people were doing. And, and the rest of us were just gonna like, you know, but this is, this is five dollars cheaper and
Yeah.
this is what I'm going with. Or like, you know, we can't have bottled water and I agree, we can't have bottled water, but then I realized except for there are communities that don't have access to clean water. And that's like, it's such a large problem that like that those kind of ethical dilemmas of, well, where do you draw the line and what can you personally do? And what can we do? And how can we advocate? And what can we do as communities and groups to not just, it's not just not having bottled water, it's making sure that everyone has access to clean drinking water. So the way that we structured the book was
I'm gonna pause it there and just start reflecting is, is care of creation a white thing? That was a connection I had never made. But is this something that only wealthy people with a fair amount of agency can participate in, which I think is what she's saying her bias was to start with before she really thought about it. Maybe a privileged thing, says Blaine. Yeah.
I don't think personally that it's just a white thing because I think, um, many indigenous groups are rooted in the earth, this earth and have cared for it for a very long time.
Mm hmm.
Prior to colonization.
Thank you. Diane's saying the same thing. natives have taken care of the environment for ages. It's only white if you've not been blessed with connection to indigenous communities. Tammy says, I think it's a privilege thing, not necessarily a white thing. There's a cost to stewardship that not all can bear. Lots of environmental groups are ninety-eight percent white, says Marie Paul. Maybe it's related to how close one is to the environment regardless of your background. But there is a cost to caring. I think that's, that's important. I think that's part of what Lydia is trying to point to. I don't think it should be, says Wendy. But it's something to think about. Are we listening? Are we allowing all to share in the privilege? And if not, how should we be doing this differently? Let's listen a little more.
A movement I hope from
Well, let me just back up there.
Water is making sure that everyone has access to clean drinking water. So the way that we structured the book was a movement I hope from or a movement, maybe a journey of love. So we really, we went to the writers and said, there's so many emotions around climate. There's like climate grief, there's climate anxiety, there's climate love. How are you feeling? How, how does it affect your faith? Tell us about it. So we got various responses based on the questions that we asked, which were sort of leading, like we did have some leading questions around there. Are you going to talk about climate anxiety? Are you going to talk about climate grief? Are you going to talk about care for creation? And then when they came in, I was thinking of what motivates us in our faith and what motivates us to act? And usually we always need to start with that relationship and some sort of connection and love. So we talk about being good and creation being good. Like, that's kind of like the start of the Bible. It was good. And do we, first you need to buy into that, right? Like you need to buy in that it was good. And then, and then that idea of awe and love. So it's good, we fall in love with it. We, we, and then we learn from it. We go in relationship with it. So now we're learners. And then from there, we're more grounded in a place to go into action. So you know, we can act for things throughout the, throughout the journey, but when we are more grounded and more rooted, we're able to act more boldly, I believe. So I think part of the movement of the book that I was hoping for was to help ground people in the awe and the majesty and the beauty of creation and the connectedness of it. So that we were deeply rooted, which is kind of like the roots here, so that we could act and act in ways that were, when we act out of love, I believe that those actions are the most fruitful. Like I think we can act out of lots of different things and there's nothing wrong with that, but I do think, I do think the way of Jesus is ultimately the way of love. And when we act out of love, I believe that those actions often become the most fruitful, even no matter the size of it. And I think I tried to get at that in, in the prologue, like when I was thinking, when we write the book and we do most of the editing, it's mostly during Advent.
I wondered where the baby Jesus came from.
The baby was like really on my mind. And, but the thing that really caught me about the baby, because I was literally wrestling Steve with this idea of like I was having an argument with someone in my family about like recycling and I'm like, well, does it actually matter? Like it's all good. And I was, I was like, could you just like, not like, I don't want to argue about it. Just put it in the garbage if you can't sort it. But no, I'm not, I'm not advocating for not recycling. I'm just saying I was having this conversation. And then it made me think about acts of love and can we quantify them? Like, are they? How, when, when I do something for the environment as an act of love, is it quantifiable? And then when you think of a baby and you think of loving a young child or loving anybody, all of those acts of love are so important. The little, the, the way your face lights up when you see them is as important as feeding them the food. Like they're, they're all important. Don't get me wrong. And we need to make sure that we care for people in their entirety, but babies understand that all acts of love are important. And it's not, and they don't quantify it the way that we quantify it. And I'm convinced that babies are smarter than us. So.
Responses to that? I can see that argument happening in her kitchen, by the way. I'm trying to remember who old her child is, but old enough to argue back. I think what jumped out at me in that was the sense that the book is I think what jumped out at me in that was the sense that the book is intended to be a journey of love. Somebody further up the chat than I can see right now mentioned that they came expecting to feel guilty. And it's interesting to me to think about the book not as a a movement from guilt to freedom, but a journey of love. Tammy says, the idea of not being quantifiable opens doors to all acts, no matter how simple or the small. They all add to the sum of all care for God's world. Interesting. Meg says, when she raises the topic of recycling, I'm put in touch with what I'm finding out about the lies that we've been told by the plastics industry to persuade us to accept the deluge of plastic we now live with. It was in Tim Horton's yesterday on my way home from our vacation, trying to decide whether throwing away a wooden knife was any better for the environment than throwing away a plastic one. So they didn't give me the option to do anything else with it. Deborah says, I think some in my congregation didn't sign up or buy the book expecting it to be a guilt trip. Guilt is a terrible motivator, isn't it? Also had people who did not sign up because they find this topic overwhelming. Here's the line that jumped out at me in the forward. If I believe that, I don't have to feel guilty. I just have to roll up my sleeves. Thoughts on that? Thank you, Heather. A little child shall lead them, she says, seeing the wonder a child has in a caterpillar, a butterfly, an anthill, the clouds, or in picking dandelions for their parents. Acting in love gives us a focus on the holiness of creation and helps us take action, however small. We are part of interrelated issues. Karen says, I like the quote, "Hope is a verb with its sleeves rolled up," from David Orr. So the the book is called Act Fast. And there's an urgency in the title, but it's also a pun because what we do in Lent or what what we Christians used to do anyway was fast. At least go into the spirituality of things. And the sense in the book is that our actions need to be grounded in our spirituality. Our spirituality needs to be expressed in action that really we can't do one without the other. In other pieces of our Lenten study, I'm planning on some, at least one sort of reflection time in small groups. But this, for this first meeting, I wanted to take that time instead and share with you just a little bit more about the Climate Motivators project that um that you will hear about as you read through the book. There's at least one report from the Climate Motivators um program each week throughout the book. So if you're following along and reading a book, a a chapter each day or a reflection each day, you'll hear about it. But I invited I invited uh one of the leaders to come and tell us just a little bit more about it and what moved her in it. So here's the, here's the group of climate motivators, a bunch of uh uh young adults from across the country who spent a significant amount of time together trying to figure out their own spirituality around it and then actions that they could take. Let me go and find the beginning of this one. Oops, I put the wrong video on here. Hang on just a second. Let me go and find it. Hang it up over here. Okay, and I will just switch the share over to this one. Would be helpful for the folks in the Lenten study just to get a taste of that program. And I mean, they can read the the details of it. So tell us that in a sentence. But tell us what that did to you, how that changed you. And Laurie, you start because Lydia has been talking. So so this is, this is our colleague Lori Neal, who is one of the Justice Staff people at the General Counsel Office.
Sure. Um, well, the Climate Motivator Program is a program that was initiated uh in anticipation of last summer. So these climate motivators um with the leadership of Amy Crawford pulled together, came from across, joined from across Canada with the sponsorship of their community of faith. So we're talking about coming out of a community of faith and supporting them and saying, yes, we endorse this young person and we want to um accompany them through this eight-week program where they um were able to come together online to identify, to learn more about what the broader church is doing on climate. And then to identify a specific project they can work on in consultation with their community of faith. And then be able to share that towards the end of the time together, as well as some time together with a moderator um in person in in B C. So it was a very rich, rich time and many different staff and leaders were involved. Um, my specific involvement was supporting the three um young leaders who led the, who were hired as coordinators. And um two of them have participated in um a Hunger on the Hill advocacy effort where they had gone to, gone to Ottawa and learned about advocacy with members of parliament around climate change and hunger. And they were then selected to to lead the Climate Motivator Program. And so they were able to bring that that experience and dedication and then be able to accompany and support the climate motivators in learning more about advocacy. Um, and and I think what was really moving for me was the the real capacity and enthusiasm and knowledge that they brought to um that task. And they were able to convene a meeting of different members of parliament from different parties to come together and just talk about youth engagement and climate and where they find hope and where they find purpose and where the change can happen. So to hear stories from um federal members of parliament talk about what changes they have seen happen and the impact young people have had in implement, in affecting real policy change, I think um was very inspiring to me to both see our young people, the United Church of Canada, coordinate that meeting and then to be together in conversation to hear that all these desires we have for climate change, kind of care for creation and responsibility in light of all the damage that's being caused, that it is in that relationship and that sharing, that change really can't happen at the policy level. It's not the only place change needs to happen, but you can actually affect change. And it's not, it's it's about people connecting with people who care and bringing those passions to the table and finding ways forward. So to have that in real time um with with federal members of parliament across parties who similarly share concern um to act and to fast from carbon emissions was really uh inspiring to accompany them in that.
What a privilege to be part of a program like that. Must have been a lot of fun.
Sure, I think they did have a lot of fun and 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 then even like, well, we're able to attend that and then be able to in their own communities of faith and local writings, be able to meet their own MPs um and and see it happening and then do it themselves in different spaces, then hear back from them how that experience was and see how in matters of months, people can do amazing things, you know, it's a long-term project, but things can happen tomorrow if you start them today.
I think the the empowerment across the board, like the ability to gather with colleagues who are like-minded and have similar passions, I could see that spark uh when Laura and I were at the gathering, but also within me, like it was so it's empowering to be with people who are passionate about something and who are looking for help in how to move forward. So it, there was a real spirit of collaboration. This is how, this is the action that I'm taking for the climate and how can I support you in it?
I'm gonna stop. So Lori has put together just a couple of slides for each of our sessions so that you can get a sense of some of the things that that are coming out of the denomination to support uh our 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 climate activities. Um, and this first one just gives you a roadmap of the sorts of things we're involved in. We're really working on four different levels at once. Uh, putting our own house in order, and that would be like the Faithful Footprints Program that helps to to um make our church buildings more more energy efficient, raising our spirited voices. And that would be like the Climate Motivators Program that that Lori was working on together with with, oh, Amy Crawford and other people who work with youth across the church. Connecting with the earth and responding to climate impact. Four different ways in which, as an organization, we're trying to to respond to climate. And I've put a link at the Church X page to a uh report. You can go and read at your leisure. That'll tell you a little more detail in each of those four pillars around what we've done and and the impact that it seems to be making. We're coming to the end of our time together. We took a little extra time at the beginning just to to talk about logistics, but I see we're four minutes over, so I'm I'm going to draw us to a close. But I wanted to remind you that this is a time of spiritual reflection, also a time to ponder action. Sometimes those two things go hand in hand. You'll notice that in each of the reflections, as you're reading through the book, there are things to ponder, there is a prayer to read. And there are actions to do. That would be true for each of the reflections. It's not true for the forward. So there isn't a specific action that we're invited to do this week. Uh, so what I wanted to suggest, just for this first week, is to choose one from the first week or two of the book. Next week, we'll be looking at week three. Read through the book, choose one of the uh pages and work through it from start to finish. Read the reflection answer for yourself, the questions to ponder, pray the prayer. And then do the actions that are recommended there. And think about what changes for you when you actually do that, when you hold the act and the fast together. We need to draw this to a close. We promised you an hour. So it's time to close in prayer. Just as we prepare for that. Or maybe as a, as the beginning part of our prayer. I'd like to invite you to add your own petitions to the chat. What rose up for you today? What do you need to say to God? What do you hope for from God? What do we need from God in the midst of this? Let's take some time just to gather together all that we've done over the last hour. To reconnect with the light and the goodness of creation that we began with an hour ago. I'll read out some of the petitions that come up on the chat and then I'll close with the prayer by Robin Roach that is on page five of the book. And so let us pray. Oh, God, who created all that is and all that we are and all that we have in our care. Bring thanks. The wonder of creation. The awe that fills us. For the beauty to connect us. For the journey of love that we're walking on. The rest as we name our concerns, our confessions, our gratitude. Confession that this topic often makes me judgmental. Help me approach it with love. I'm grateful for Lydia. For her passion. And for her laughter. Help me, says Deborah, and focus on what I can do, not on what is too overwhelming. Help us with our anxiety about extinction. Heavenly God, we humbly seek your guidance and protection. Grant us wisdom to care for your creation. Help us to be good stewards of the earth, treating it with respect and with love. Inspire us to make choices that sustain and restore the environment so we can enjoy the wonders of your creation forever. When you transform our hearts, guiding us to nurture and to connect with you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you, friends, for your comments, for your presence and your prayers for your passion. I look forward to connecting with you again next week.